Good morning and welcome to the Standing Committee's meeting for Wednesday, April 16th, 2025. All council meetings will be live streamed on the city's website, and for those joining us at the table, please do not turn off your microphones. Our first order of business is roll call. Will the clerk please take the roll?
Mr. Sharland.
Here.
Mr. Coghill. Ms. Gross.
Here.
Mr. Lavelle. Mr. Mosley.
Here.
Mrs. Kail Smith. Mrs. Warwick. Mr. Wilson. Mrs. Strasburger Chair.
Here.
Four members present.
Okay. Now, we have Councilman Wilson joining remotely. Thank you, thank you, okay.
Five members present.
Thank you, Madam Clerk. Our next order of business is public comment. I would like to remind all speakers that rules of council state that comments are limited to matters of concern, official action, or deliberation which are or may be before City Council. Profanity will not be permitted. Please state your name and neighborhood for the record. You will have three minutes to speak. Our first registered speaker is Azasha Metafield. We don't see them online. We do not see Azasha Metafield in the chambers, so we will now move on to those in the chambers wishing to speak. Please approach the podium.
My name is Yvonne F. Brown. I live at 715 Mercer Street, up at the top of the hill. That's Crawford and Befford. It read alert, my councilman is not here, but there are two of you sitting here looking at me. I want you to please tell my councilman, as you come down Befford, you got one side of the hill you go down, one you're supposed to come up. Well, about 8:30 last night, I happened to be looking down, and I seen two cars going down Befford at the same time. One that's not supposed to go down there. There is a... The reason why I'm bringing that up, because if you don't know about that area, you can get mixed up. And I see where if they just put a... Even an arrow, the point going down, you gotta go this way. There was two of them actually going down, and one's supposed to be coming up. They were going down at the same time. That person on that left-hand side did not know it. And we do need a sign. I wish you would... If one of you would go up there, actually look. If you're coming down, you would not know it. I know it because I live there. But please, I've seen a couple cars go down there before. Also, I'm still upset about Cory... Now, this is Cory's. He's running for mayor. I couldn't find one of Ed Gany, but it was dark like this. See this blackness? This is how they made dark, made the mayor. I don't care for the mayor myself, but right don't wrong nobody. They're trying to put fear into us, that he's dark, sinister, something's wrong with him. Whereas with Cory, they got him. Oh, his natural color. But they made Gany. See, you just played a race card, and you say, "We do." I didn't think about that until I seen that. I said, "How the mayor gets so black?" They made him that way. He's not that color. And I want you to understand, we as Black people see it. You just might pretend like, "Oh, we didn't do it," but we see what's happening. That man is not that dark. How come he got all black just before it's time for him to run for election? The same way with Petit. Up in his... Up in our area, he got a big sign for Petit he's running. Well, let me tell you who else is running. This man, Jeff Wooldorf. Now, someone, one of the residents in my building told me, he was in the building the same day that Lavelle and his man was in the building. This man is running for Petit's job. Now, I have a problem with Petit. Because of him, we have that actor, the bad actor, that keeps coming in the building because the police said, not me, they're dropping the ball. He said Arbor and Petit. And he is dropping the ball. And the reason why I'm saying that... My... I got one more... Oh, my time is up. But anyway, please help us. Please.
Thank you very much. Next speaker, please.
Special Agent Sunshine, how's everybody? Everybody's not here. God, you're amazing. I know what you're doing in the background. Lord, please protect me from the voodoo Hexis curses that may be sent towards me in this chamber. I return and send a 100 million billion trillion googolex, and whoever's sending them, throw them into a lake of fire. In Jesus' name, I pray. Amen. I'm gonna start with the wisdom for today. It comes from Proverbs 21:13. It says, "Those who shut their ears to the cries of the poor will be ignored in their own time of need." A lot of people being ignored. It's not good. God is very angry about it. God blesses us so that we might bless others. My cup runneth over because I'm here to be a blessing, not to get blessings. You can't get one without being one. It doesn't take an hour to preach that. A woman of character loves herself above all others. We love God and ourselves. But in this world that we live in today, we have misogynistic men who have a problem with women. Strong women, independent women, educated women, saved celibate women. They have a problem with us. You know why? Because God created us for them. God created women for man. It'll never be the other way around. And misogynistic men have a real big problem with that. Well, if I'm the problem, I'm gonna be the brightest, shiniest problem a misogynistic man will ever have. And the one I speak of today, his name is James English. He's the man who runs the North Side Overflow Shelter, who is a misogynistic man. He had a problem with me leaving and his employees helping me with my luggage. He wouldn't let him do it. It was very, very ugly. And Maya Angelou once said, "You'd never forget what people say, but you will always remember how they make you feel." And the way he made me feel was stronger. You know why? Because I moved everything that I had to move myself, because I praise God for my health and my strength. In Jesus' name, I pray that he has the health and the strength that he's gonna need for the karma that's coming for him, for how he treats people, especially women. Proverbs 31:10 says, "An excellent wife who can find, she is far more precious than jewels." I'm not married yet. I'm kind of running from men. But God is stopping me in matrimony. Amen. In Jesus' name, amen.
Thank you very much. Next speaker, please. Are there any further speakers? Seeing none, we will now move on to our Standing Committee's agenda. Our first committee is the Finance and Law Committee, and we have one deferred paper, Bill 1634.
Bill 1634, Resolution Repealing an Item in Resolution Number 512 of 2022. Effective date, September 23rd, 2022. In order to rescind the sale.
Motion to approve discussion.
We have a second?
Oh, second.
Second. With discussion, Councilman Coghill.
Okay, thank you, Madam Chair. I would like to, I guess, let's just start with bringing to the table Mr. Geiger and the others here that can answer any questions as far as this... Why I put this bill in. Director Gula, thank you, yes.
I'm Jen Gula, the City Treasurer and Director of Finance.
David Geiger, Legislative and Policy Director.
Okay, thank you. Thank you both for being here. We spoke about this last week, I think it was the last week. But now, I've been struggling with this, right? Okay? Just because it was brought to my attention. I never... I don't know how processes work in certain departments in the City of Pittsburgh, but I just want to, for other council members to know the kind of how it came to my attention, and then you could fill in the gaps and questions that we might have for you, okay? So, we have a process where if somebody wants to purchase a city-owned property, they put hand money down. And is there a certain percentage that's always on that, or is it always...
It's...
On the percentage of the sale of the building? Is that right?
It's a percentage of the sale of the building, or the land, or $250, whichever is greater.
Got it. Okay. So, a constituent came to me, this property lies in Brookline, my district, of course, and told me the scenario that they had went through. So, what happened was they put the hand money down in expectation to get the property, you know, obtain the property. I think in our forms, it says it could take anywhere from 18 to 12 to 18 months, or something of that nature. So, she put the money down, and substantial amount, I would say, put the money down. And I guess we put that money towards the administrative costs and things of that nature. Is that what we do with that hand money, or do we just hold that?
It goes in escrow.
It goes in escrow. Okay, good, good. So, it went beyond the 18 months. It was, I think, a little bit over two years, finally, that this person decided, you know what? The place looks like it's deteriorated beyond what is really repairable, okay? So, he or she was asking for money back, right? And we talked about this. We were worried, as a city, that it might set precedence, because we don't typically do that. It's in the agreement, whereas, you know, you put the hand money down, you're kind of tied into the property at that point. There's no refunds, basically.
Well, not entirely. So, if by chance, once they put their hand money down and signed the proposal, if council... Then we send the legislation to council. And if council were to strike that sale from the legislation, at that point in time, we would refund the hand money. But if it's approved by council and the sale moves forward, then the hand money stays, and anything after that point would be considered a forfeit if they were to back out.
And the sale I'm speaking of was approved by council?
Yes.
Okay, gotcha. So, you're not wrong, okay? I just want to state that, as the city. I think we have issues with our process more than anything, but you're correct. And, you know, we don't want to set a bad precedence. It's not... It's kind of in the agreement, but also in the agreement is 12 to 18 months, and, you know, things of that nature. I think what's really wrong here, and the reason why I really wanted to just bring this to light, so we can correct this moving forward, is the 24-plus months, right? Now, I rode by, I go by this house. This house is right at the bottom of the hill from me. I went by there today, and I'm telling you, there's holes in the roof of this big around, right? That's like, bad, bad news. All the way down, right? I mean, it's like, this person is probably not the right person for this property, I will tell you, not at this point. The right person is somebody like me, a general contractor coming, and has to like, kind of strip this property down to nothing, basically, and rebuild it. That's kind of where I feel... That's just an outside observation from the ground. I wasn't inside this place. I didn't inspect it or anything of that nature, right? So, this person wants to move that down payment, that $4,000 that they had put down for the shore, the cost, the shore of this property up, to another property, and we don't do that either. We have not done that. We have not... There's not a precedence of that. Is that right?
Well, that's not... We've done it one time.
Oh, okay.
And we did it one time because solely on the part of the city, the... And it may have even come to a point where their original application had been lost, and there was some...
Yeah, there was one exception. There was one exception to the rule. I understand. We don't want to make this a norm. I get it. I think you're doing the right thing by sticking to, you know, yeah, we don't, you know, we don't want to go off course here. We really don't. And then, who knows, you know, how many sales are pending out there? I have no idea, to be honest with you.
Well, I have to say that the reason that it's like this is because, at a certain point, the city starts to expend money in order to complete the sale. So, we pay like, quiet title costs, which we hope to recuperate at the close of the sale. So, and this money comes out of the 3TB trust fund, a trust fund that we've worked extremely hard to keep from going into the negative and have built it back. So, if we consistently allowed people to actually do that and refund all of that money after we've expended it, then that becomes a problem.
Right, I agree. And, you know, to be honest with you, I'm not necessarily asking you to refund this person's money. I think that is the right thing to do, and, you know, but I don't think we're in a position... We'd have to get our solicitor up here and, I think, talk further about this. Unfortunately, we don't have the time, right? The sale of this property is coming up, I think, within two weeks, as to that person needs to act on it, or we just need to rescind the sale and they lose the money, right? So, that's where we're at with this. I would love to refund this person, but I understand exactly what you're saying, okay? But again, I feel like we're bad realtors here, I guess, right? I mean, we take hand money down, and again, a substantial amount, $4,000, I think it's okay for me to say that. You know, on a piece of property that at the time was probably worth every bit of what that person's paying for it. Two years goes by, and again, I'm almost positive, I can't say certainty, but the person would not have, you know, went ahead with that hand money had they seen the hole in the roof this big around, in the front. You could see it from the street, you know? And that tells me basically, big, big, big problems, right? So, whether it was bad decision from their part, maybe, you know, maybe that place wasn't inspected. I didn't inspect it two years ago. Did it just all fall apart in two years? I can't say that, you know? I could tell you that hole probably wasn't there, because that would have been like... So, my... What I'm really trying to achieve is moving forward. I feel like we need to move these properties. We don't have to move them if we stabilize them, though, right? I mean, I mean, just bring in Public Works crews, right? We could do that in-house, I would hope, just to...
Out of the 3TB trust fund, it needs to be paid from there. So, unless that trust fund is...
We can't do in-kind work from the city?
No.
We can't send our Public Works people...
DPW charges us if we send, you know, if we send Public Works crew out to board up a building, because the windows were broken out, or the door has been compromised. I mean, they charge us for it. And it goes, it gets charged to the trust fund. So, I mean, ideally, that's the place that we would like to be in, right?
So, Director Hornstein sends you a bill, basically, for boarding it up, and that goes... Where's that money then I'll go to?
It would go to them, or even if they charge us for demolition. I mean, we hope to recoup costs on demolitions when we... But it gets, you know, billed to us. We may not pay it instantly at that moment, but eventually, you know, it's supposed to come from that trust fund and reimburse that. It's not necessarily in-kind. And something like repairing roofs, it gets paid out of the 3TB trust fund. Like, we would have to secure a contractor and pay for it, so...
So, even if you use in-house, we're billed for it?
Something like that, most likely.
Do you give you a discount, at least? I mean, what the... So, anyway, my point is this. Moving forward, we need, if we accept hand money on a piece of property, and if we're not sure we can turn it around in, say, eight months... First of all, all needs to be in writing. This all needs, you know, we have 12 to 18 months it could take. This took 24 months. We need more clarity, right? We need to do it in a certain time period, or we need to just stabilize. I think the best thing is stabilize it.
Part of that timeline, though, is also attributed to how fast the actual purchaser acts. So, this specific purchaser, we requested, I think we sent them a letter in October of '22, said that the legislation had passed, and you're now required to give us a title report. And we didn't get it. It's supposed to be within 60 days. We didn't get it until like, four months after that. So, we didn't get it till sometime in January.
Yeah, I'm not casting blame on either side. Just saying, I'm really not. I really am just like, trying to expose this problem.
And we say 12 to 18 months, but there could be, there's things that we don't have control over, and part of that is quiet title with the courts. And even though we may file a petition, it could take a long time for it to move through the court process in order to get final orders and complete it.
Okay. And let me just stop right there for a second. So, if they, you know, you do all the title clearance, whatever, you pay an attorney, I guess, to do this groundwork. So, if like, this person's asking to switch that credit that they put down to another property, what amount of work is done on that first property that we don't have to do again, that we could credit this person for? Meaning, title clearance, right? I mean, right? There's certain things that are done out of that hand money that will be there for the next buyer, that we don't have to do again, is what I'm asking, right?
We would put it up for what they call sealed bid. And we would put a bid amount and send a letter to, I guess, whoever else was interested in it could apply for it, and we'd have to put it up for bid, where they would enter in a bid price through the mail.
I mean, would you have to get through the whole same process for... So, say, for instance, if we gave this person back their, refunded their hand money, would you have to go through the same process every part of the expense that is inherited by the city?
The title's already quieted, and we already expended the money for it. So, it's titled, but it's quieted title in the name of the purchaser. So, we would probably have to go back to court and adjust it to the city.
Okay, I'm probably getting off too far in the track. Okay, I get it, you know? I know this is complicated, believe me, and that's why I struggled with such a thing. I'm like, because I've never been in this situation. David, you can say, I'll let you speak as soon as I'm done with my last point here, okay? The ultimate goal here, I feel, is like, right? This is a person, a young professional, wanting to go through the City of Pittsburgh, purchase a affordable home, what they thought or think is an affordable home. So, again, when I say we're bad realtors, this person's leaving, losing their hand money. I'm not casting blame on us or this person necessarily, but this is the result. And sour to our process, I'm sure. I haven't spoken to that person on those terms. And we got a property that's still blighted and sitting there, and, you know, I'm thinking if we'd have just stabilized this thing, I'm sure that person would have gone through with this sale, and we'd have this thing back on the tax roll. And so, now, I still got a blighted piece of property there. This person doesn't have a home, probably can't, you know, I don't know what $4,000 means to this person, right? But to me, it's a lot of money to me still, right? And I'm 60, so... So, that's my goal, is really to get the process moving. I would like to see a stabilization. Now, I understand, Director, complications. If Public Works is billing us, maybe we could straighten that out here at the table. I don't know. You know, I have no idea, to be honest with you. But if we can use Public Works people just to do the basic repairs, so this property doesn't deteriorate to a point where it's un... You couldn't even move in this property for a year. There's that type of work to do. Chimneys, roofs, windows, siding, doors, you name it, right? That's just the exterior. So, I just don't want anybody else to be in a bad deal. And I'm not saying we set this person up. This property is probably worth what we're asking for to somebody like me, who can come in with trucks and labor and not expend that type of money on it. So, I like the asking price. I just really want to make good for this person, so they can use that money. And if we can do it in any tricky way, transfer, I don't know, you know, just find a way where they can still put, use that, some credit there. Doesn't have to be all of it, you know? If we could figure out what we expended on the first time, that we don't have to this time, maybe there's a difference there, I don't know. So, that's my goal, okay? I know you're uncomfortable with it. I'm uncomfortable with it. I wish it, you know, wasn't in my lap, to be honest with you. So, go ahead. I'm sorry, David, please.
Councilman, I just wanted to, you know, make sure that we're addressing your global concern and not just the minutia of this sale, right? And, you know, as we've discussed, you know, we want to thank City Council for their work and investments on tools like the land bank. I think the situation we're talking about here on a, you know, the specific case, is really well-suited for a land bank transaction in the future. The process started well before we got the land bank up and running and moving and processing properties, but the flaws in the city's sales process from a structural standpoint, right, are the reason why we've worked so hard to get the land bank functional after a decade of it not being functional. And so, I just wanted to point out that you are correct. This probably isn't a, you know, great process for the scale of the project, for the individual and their capacity. And to your points about improving the process, I think we've already done a lot to improve the process and make the public options available through the land bank. And, you know, that's a credit to City Council as well.
I agree, and you're absolutely right. This really belongs in the land bank, I feel, right? I mean, this is what we kind of created the land bank for. This deal, like you said, started before, so wasn't, couldn't even be part of that process, I guess. Could this sale, or this property go to the land bank now? If...
I mean, I don't necessarily know the legality of it, but...
It wouldn't solve, to answer your question, most simply, it wouldn't solve the question at hand, which is that the legislation on the table right now does seek to refund the hand money, which we'd like to see amended. I think we would still like to see that part of the bill struck, and then whether or not it makes sense to move forward with a land bank transaction is a question beyond, you know, the Director and myself. It would have to involve, you know, land bank staff and other individuals talking to the interested party here and trying to figure that out. But I do think it's a potential solution, for sure.
Right. Is there, Director Gula, is there a record of others asking for their money back, or is that something that doesn't commonly happen, or is it...
There are some occasions where people do ask for their hand...
Same situation, like the buildings, like, not, I mean, you know what I mean?
For various situations.
Okay, got it, right, right, right. And we've denied.
Every single time.
Right, okay, okay. Well, that's, that's important, no? You know, and again...
Even in the mag... Someone did take us to the magistrate over it, and they upheld our contract.
Got it, yeah, understood, understood. And again, I'm not really trying to, I don't want the city to do something it's not comfortable with in a legal way, honestly. So, I'm gonna vote for it anyway today, just out of principle, but, you know, I really hope we could just dive right in and change how the process works.
And to be clear, we're not against the principle of it. We're just...
I know, oh, I know that, yeah.
We're against, I guess, a precedent that it could set in the future.
I believe me.
That could bankrupt that trust fund.
And you should be, yeah. And you should be, honestly. So, you know, again, I'm not casting fault or blame. I'm just saying, when we take hand money on a piece of property, it should be at least in as good a shape as when we took that hand money when they walked into that place. There's just a couple of things we can do. It's simple, is stabilize them ourselves, or give that person the right to hire a contractor to come in and stabilize it themselves. That is probably the simplest solution here, right? I mean, but she... But they couldn't do that.
Again, Councilman, I would actually disagree that... I don't think either of those solutions are the simplest. I think the simplest solution here is shortening the amount of time that the sales process takes. That way, I agree with you in principle. Our goal should be, when somebody enters an agreement of sale for a property, that we should be moving as quickly to get that out of the public hands and into their hands, so that what they've agreed to buy is in a substantially similar state, and that they're able to get moving as quickly as possible. I think that benefits the individual, it benefits the neighborhood and the residents surrounding that property, and ultimately is, you know, a fiscally responsible decision for the city, which is, again, why I will keep emphasizing sort of the use of the land bank as a tool. But I think some of those other solutions you're bringing up may have been worth exploring if something like the land bank...
If we didn't have the land bank, because the land bank wasn't up and running, right? I, you know, you don't have to say anymore. Honestly, you're right on. You really are, you know? This is an unfortunate situation. This is an unfortunate situation. I'm really just trying to, you know, the, the person, I, I'm sure this money means a lot to them and probably the difference of them securing a home or not. And I want people to be encouraged to use the city process to use, to buy these homes. I guess I really, it's hard for me to speak up because I have no clue as to what the rest of the inventory looks like. Is it viable? Was it movable? Is it, how much money you have to put into this certain property? But, um, but this certain property, if this council doesn't approve this money back, I don't think this candidate or this person, um, has the resources. It's going to be a quarter million dollars to bring this place up to speed, I would tell you, you know? And that's without thinking about it. That's, that's, that's conservative, okay? So, I mean, everything, right? From the top to bottom, maybe the frame. Hopefully parts of the frame are good, so. So, uh, I, yeah, I, again, it was really the wrong customer for the wrong house and that's probably not our fault, honestly. So, um, that's all for me. I guess I'll let, open up to other council members. Appreciate you working with me on this and, you know, um, hopefully the land bank could settle all this stuff for us in the future. So, thank you, thank you, Madam Chair.
Thank you.
Sorry to take so long.
No, that's okay. Uh, we have a, a couple of other members who, who have indicated they'd like to speak. Councilmember Warwick and then I know Councilwoman Gross online would like to speak.
Hey, thank you. Just so, so just so I'm, I'm, I'm clear on, so we had someone who wanted to buy, this was a city-owned property.
Mm-hmm.
Someone who wanted to buy it. How much was the for sale price?
Forty thousand dollars.
Four, okay, so they wanted to, so, so forty thousand and they put down?
Four thousand dollars.
Like a four thousand dollar sort of hold. What was this, did they have a chance to, to go inside and check it out and all of that?
Yep.
At the beginning? And is, was there some kind of like report, like, you know, state of the, of the property report or something like that?
We don't, we don't do that, but we will set up a, if they wanted to go in and view the property, they could bring whoever they liked to go and view it with them and give opinions on how much things would cost and what repairs would be needed. They could bring whoever they wanted to. So they could, anybody, and that's part of the process, they could schedule a viewing with the staff and they'll take them out.
Okay.
To the property, open it up for them and they can go in and see.
Okay.
Whatever they needed to see and take any contractors that they wanted to with them.
And do we have someone there? Like, if, if they want to do that, do we have someone there?
They set up an appointment and my staff go out with them. They coordinate ahead of time, they set a date, just like you would for, you know, like a, just a real estate agent. Like an open, not necessarily an open house where it's open and people come in and out, but they would schedule a viewing.
And after that, they, if, if they decide to, to move forward, would they, they sign some contract that says?
There's a proposal to purchase.
Okay.
That they sign, it's a contract and they put down their hand money.
Okay.
And then we send legislation to city council. I think we actually have legislation on the books today with a list of properties that those are people that have applied, they've been approved as buyers, they've put down their hand money and now we're presenting them to you to okay the sale of those properties to these individuals.
Okay, so, um, and in that contract, does it say anything about, like, you're compelled to, to go through with this regardless of what happens to the property between now and then?
It does.
Then, okay. Okay. So, so we don't actually know, sort of like the state of the property? We don't have a record of the state of the property at the time that this initial exchange happened? Like whether there was a hole in the roof or whether there would, so we, okay. Maybe that would be something to even just like a, I mean, if we're there anyway?
Normally, so when we price a property, we look at comparable properties in the same area in order to determine a price. Normally, if the staff is aware of compromises like that, some, especially something that's visible, like a hole in the roof that you could see from the street, those things would have been noted and taken into consideration at the time of the pricing.
Okay, okay. Um, so, I mean, do we acknowledge that the hole came over the course of the?
I would assume it would, would have come after or else we probably would have noted that there was a hole in the roof.
That there was a hole in the roof, okay. And, um, okay, so, so the contract was signed, the, they paid their $4,000, you know, they put down their $4,000. And then you said there was, we sent them something and then it took four months for them to send it back?
So after we send the legislation to council and council approves the sale, we usually send a letter.
Okay.
Stating that council's approved your sale, the sale's ready to move forward, you need to secure a title report. And I think we give them 60 days.
Okay.
In order to, they're, they're responsible for getting one and submitting to us.
Okay.
A title report. That title report is then used to start the quiet title process.
Got it. Okay, so the 60 days, so two months, do we send like a reminder? Like maybe they didn't get the letter or something like that?
I'm not sure if they do. Um, they, I think Amanda might reach out if she notices that there's no response and it goes on for a while.
Okay.
But, and she may do that by phone or email.
Okay, okay. But in any case, it was, it was four months to get, get the quiet title process moving?
Yep.
And then, um, and, and I know that this can vary, but in your experience, what is, assuming you had like, you know, an attorney who was ready, you know, just had nothing better to do but quiet this title, right? What would be generally speaking, the, the fastest turnaround generally on, on quieting a title?
Like eight months to a year? That's moving really quick, I think.
And that's?
And it depends on, so as part of the title report, there's a list of basically creditors, like anyone that would have any financial interest in the, in the property that, or any attachments. And they have to send notice to all of those people in that list. And they have to give them a certain amount of time to respond in order to, um, object to the quiet title of the property. So depending on whether or not they hear back from those individuals, they may have to mail things multiple times if they get no response from them.
Okay, so that, so that's like a year, basically? No matter whether you're the land bank, whether you're the city, whether you're?
It takes, it takes months to actually do that, but it's at least 30 to 60 day notice. And if they don't receive something back, it may start that time clock all over again.
Okay, so even like best case scenario, we're at 14 months.
Yep.
Right? Because of the initial delay and then, and then quieting the title?
The quiet title is the longest part of the process.
The quiet title's the longest part of the process.
Hands down.
Um, so, oh, and here's a question. How much, do, well, do we know how much we paid to, did we quiet the ti, we quieted the title on this property?
We quieted the title.
Okay, and do we know how much we paid to do that?
It's at least, I think it might actually depend, but I'm not entirely sure. But we did expend the money to do it, so.
Did we expend?
Couple hundred dollars at least.
Oh, just a couple hundred dollars?
It could be upwards of that. I don't know, are you sure? Do you know? Offhand? I'm sorry, I don't know.
That's okay.
I don't think we have a known cost and in addition to attorney's fees, you'd have to calculate it and like staff time and capacity spent on, like, these are all sort of the expenses to the public, you know, that the, the hand money is meant to account for.
But, but it probably wasn't 4,000, it probably wasn't, I mean, I don't?
I, I have no idea. I don't know how, how much staff time or attorney time was spent on this property. So it's hard to say, it really is.
The filing fees could be a couple hundred to a thousand dollars, but there could be more involved in that.
Okay, okay. Um, and then again, just to, so I guess I, I'm a little confused too about DP, so, so, you know, we have DPW workers who come and board up a house that we own, right? I guess I didn't realize that either. So they, they like invoice the finance department?
Yeah, they can. I mean, they have costs as well.
Sure, sure, sure.
And this isn't like, and if, keep in mind, we say city property, but these aren't strictly city-owned properties. These are properties that we took in treasure sale and the financial interest doesn't just lie with the city, it lies with the school district and the county. So, which is why there's a separate trust fund.
Got it.
So DPW expends money in kind for properties that we own outright. That's their job.
Got it, okay.
Right? They maintain our, our city-owned parcels and buildings.
Okay.
This is not that. These are separate.
Now, now I'm understanding. Okay, so, and that is because these properties are not just, it'd be like if, it'd be like if me and my three friends owned a property and there were costs, all of us, and this person did work.
Yep.
We're all, that's how we all, it's like a joint account that we all free pay.
This, this trust fund would be responsible for paying any like water bills if there was water turned on.
Got it.
Electric bills, it comes out of there, it does not come out of DPW.
Got, it's like your joint account with your spouse or whatever. You're like, we pay all the, the family expenses out of this and then we have our own accounts for our own.
That's exactly right.
Right, right, right. Got it, got it, got it. Okay, so that, that makes a little bit more sense. Um, okay, so I guess I understand, and now just sort of a gen, so generally speaking, because I, I under, like, and, and, you know, I'm very glad that the land bank is doing so well. So could you just, just overall, sort of over, like last year, how many, how many, um, properties did the city move to, to sell? You know, how many properties did the city sell through, through this process? Whether it's to the URA or the land bank or whoever?
Through this process, it's a couple hundred, which is actually the most that we've ever done.
That was in 2024?
Yeah.
Okay, so like 200 and how, do we know how many we did in 2023?
Um, slightly shy of that. And then prior to that, like, well, during the COVID era, next to nothing. And then prior to that, maybe 30 properties a year.
Okay.
Maybe.
Maybe.
Yeah.
So what, what has been the difference? Like what's been the difference from like 19, or it's 19, um, 2000, I don't know, 18 between 2022? Like what's the difference? Do you have more staff? Do you have more?
Some of the process improved, better staff and process improvements that we have made.
Okay.
And granted, it's not perfect and it still is long, but it's way shorter than it has ever been and which has allowed us to actually do that. Plus working with our partners like the land bank.
Right.
We've been able to transfer some to them as well, so.
Okay, so some to the URA, some to the land bank and some to, but, but, but we've significantly?
It's like a third, a third, a third, so.
Okay, okay. So that's a major increase, so that's good. Um, okay, so now, and this is my, my last question, so just so I'm clear. So we're, this, this bill is to refund the person their money?
Yes.
And from your perspective, this is not something that we do?
As, once it reaches, once a sale goes past council approval and the city starts to expend the money to quiet the title and to complete the sale, then the hand, anything, if you were to back out of the deal after that point in time, then the city sees it as a forfeit and we keep the hand money in order to account for any holding costs or attorney costs that we would have incurred during that time.
And, and is that clear to the buyer upfront before they?
It's in the proposal.
Okay.
And it's in, I think it's posted even online. There's a, a standard sale process and I believe it's actually there as part of the standard sale process.
Okay, and so with this particular buyer, I mean, was there like some, well, I guess, I don't know, if there was like, I mean, I get it, if it was someone who was confused or thought that it would be a great idea, I mean, you know, that happens, like, oh, that'd be a great idea, let's do it, it'll be easy, you know? And then it's like, oh my gosh, it's not, it's actually not as easy as I thought it would be and, um, but we're worried of like, sort of like a slippery slope, like if we do it for this person.
Then we would, then we open the door for it to?
Then it would be like precedence to do it for, for other people.
That's right. And a concern is if you allow even to transfer that money from, you know, this property to another one that they were wanting to purchase, what if they fell through on that purchase? And then they wanted to do it to another one? Like where does, where's the line in the sand that we draw? Do, do you see what I'm saying?
And is, is the reason that we, is the reason that we take that down payment, is it because we're about to dive in and like spend a bunch of money to like quiet this title? And so we don't want people just be like, oh yeah, I'll take it, sign me up? And then we spend all this money?
Exactly, right.
To quiet the title and they're like, oh yeah, nevermind, sorry, I'm not really interested. So that's what this is about. It's like, it's like, you know, you have a catering business and someone's like, I'm having a big party and you're like, okay, great, give us whatever, because if we buy a bunch of stuff and spend a bunch of money and then you back out.
Then they're at least compensated for what they were put out.
Got it.
In order to handle your party.
Got it.
Same thing.
Okay, well, thanks.
Same as any other real estate transaction. I mean, when you go to buy a home from a realtor, you do the same thing.
Okay.
You put down earnest money and start the sale process.
Okay.
And they use that for, it goes against then what you, your closing costs. So it were, if we were charging her $40,000 and she gave us four grand, I mean, it comes off the balance of what she would owe at the closing, so.
Okay, that's all the questions I have. I appreciate it. Thank you.
Thanks, Councilwoman Gross.
Thank you, Madam Chair. Just trying to keep my microphone on here, thank you. Um, Director Gula, um, I, I just want to put things in context and again, for my colleagues, um, you've, you know, we've kind of gone over this before, so forgive me, but I think it's important for the public to kind of put these things in some kind of context. And I don't have all the numbers in front of me, Director. Um, so we can just have ballpark numbers if, if you don't have them in front of you as well. But in my last recollection, looking at the entire list of properties that the, the 3TB that we, the city has control over in the treasure sale inventory is what we usually call it, it was roughly about 10,000 properties. Is that still true?
It's, at, at last count, that's probably true. There could be, I mean, when we last looked at it, yes, that would be true.
And I recall that some 95% or more of those, um, were vacant lots with no structures.
That's probably accurate. The largest number of property holdings that we have are vacant lots.
And, and, I mean, I think I looked because, um, for, for, you know, the public, this is, you know, you can export the report into a spreadsheet and, you know, you can, there are columns with codes in them and one of them says whether or not it has a structure on the lot. And, um, I believe there were only several hundred, um, in the entire inventory that had a structure at all.
Yeah, there aren't very many.
Yeah, okay. So I just wanted people to understand that because I have seen conversations either on social media, sometimes even in, in reporting that make it sound like the city has thousands of actual homes. And that is not the case. There are maybe several hundred and they're probably in conditions similar to this one.
Yes, and they're?
And, and, and I believe that they'll, we have prioritized moving those into the land bank. But, um, I, I also want to put some other numbers in perspective, um, because, um, Director Gula, we had a post agenda, it might've been more than 12 months ago, where we were presenting on the just volume of transactions. Because that's kind of spoken to a little bit here, reviewing how lengthy of a time there is for quiet title under the Treasure Sales Act. This is, which is, it's all required by state law, by the way, the kinds of things that you were just describing.
Yep.
Um, and the numbers I have in front of me are slightly different than I think the reports that you generate because we, I pulled just numbers from our city council legislation. Like we have, as you point out later on today's agenda, there's dozens of, of properties. And so we counted up the properties going back in years and, um, you know, before the land bank was up and running, but even, even treasure sale properties. I mean, going back to 2019, properties like this, in 2019, there were only some 24 that were moved through treasure sale. Um, and a total, if you put together, transferred to the URA, uh, either sold at side yard, sold with treasure sale or other means, I mean, it was something like 80 or 90 properties in 2019. Uh, it was even lower during the first years of COVID, 2020 and 2021, but that's understandable. Um, but then when you got to be the Director of Finance, that that volume really ramped up. Um, and the last complete year I have was 2023 and you moved some 250 properties. Um, and I don't have the numbers for 2024. Do you, do you know generally how much it was? I think I counted half of 2024. I was already up to 130 or so.
Yeah, we exceeded 2023, but I'm gonna add something there that, so due to COVID and the courts being closed and us not being able to quiet title, we had a ton of sales that were sitting, not being able to do anything. So there was a backlog. So once we moved into 2020, let's say two and three, we were processing sales that had started either slightly prior or during COVID that we could not complete. But last year, we were kind of through that backlog and those were sales that were specifically generated by my department. So there's a bit of a difference, you know, with 2023 or 2022. So it's a big number. We exceeded that number.
Yeah. And then you also kind of put in front of us, and my numbers are a little bit out of date because I, um, you know, one of the advantages of being, um, remote in council is that I can have my computer up in front of me and see that you were talking something about sales in dollars. Um, you know, closing in on a million dollars.
So the, that's probably the biggest teller right there of the whole story. So prior to now, not the not so distant past, that trust fund was underwater. The city had to actually fund at least three quarters of a million dollars every single year just to pay for the budget for the 3TB, which almost just relates to like staff and court costs. There was no extra and without that money, that trust fund would have been in the negative. And that there were no sales in order to keep it going. We had to fund it. And so we were.
So wait, I'm going to interrupt you for a second. I'm going to say that slightly differently. The city literally lost money on every property that moved.
Yep.
Got it.
So since COVID and the number of sales that we had put, during COVID, the city was like, the general fund is blah and we're not giving you money anymore for 3TB. They couldn't. So we had to sort of sink or swim on our own and we swam. And so now the balance in that trust fund is now over a million dollars.
I'm going to give you a little credit here and I'm also going to say this because it gets factually correct. Before you were the Director of Finance, the city was losing property, money on every property it moves. And the the trust fund was in the negative.
Yes.
And since you've been Director of Finance, uh, as you say, you swam and you did not sink. And now we are making money on the properties and there is about, I mean, again, my numbers are a little dated, but there was about a million dollars in the trust fund.
Yes, there's over a million dollars in the trust fund.
Well, congratulations, Director Gula. I just wanted to make sure because you were really great at helping us understand information at the table. Uh, but I didn't want that message to get lost, uh, because I really, really give you credit for it and I appreciate it. And, you know, I've been saying, you know, I I spent, had to spend 10 years wishing, um, that things would get moving, that the land banks would get fixed. I, you know, as my colleagues recall, I I passed that legislation to create in 2014 and it didn't move a single property. And so, you know, not only has the land bank gotten fixed, right? And so when we talk about like over the last couple of years, it's moved 100 properties, maybe more by now, right? I'm I'm a little behind on those counts. But you also, in addition, are moving hundreds, um, you know, or at least many dozens more. I don't have exactly. Did I cut out? I think I cut out there, sorry. Um, in addition to the land bank sales, you are also moving properties, um, as the Director of Finance directly to people buying them. Um, and so that's really important information to keep in mind. Um, and I, so I don't want to say that, do you know? Um, again, I I there's, there's not that many of those hundreds that have been moved that have structures on them. So if we only own, you know, a couple of hundred out of 10,000 that have structures, um, I suspect there's only a handful, like fewer than 10, maybe fewer than five uh, that move that have structures on them. Or or can you, can you speak to that?
With, I mean, without having exactly all the numbers in front of me, I would hate to like throw something out there. But I would say that most of the property is vacant land and not structures. So those are, you know, pricing structures is kind of few and far between.
Okay, I think that's just helpful to know because, yes, you know, maybe we want to take a closer look. I think it is important for people to understand that there's, um, you know, a sales agreement, just like when you're buying a house, you know, there's some conditions that let you kind of back out of the deal, but you have to always read the fine print really carefully in any contract. Um, and I'm I'm open to the discussion here, but I just wanted to put some of that in context as to like the level of of success that you've had and to put into context what the the level of 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 policy problem is here, which is, I I think, quite small.
Thank you.
That's all, Madam Chair. Thank you.
Thank you. We have Councilwoman Kayla Smith, followed by Councilman Wilson.
The things that you've done over the years, you've been really great to work with and you do keep the city's interest, um, you know, front and foremost. But I, but I will say, we're not, the city's budget is not great, so. Oh, but you're responsible for you're doing good. So thank you. Um, but honestly, I what I really want to know is more, um, and you were the Assistant Director too for a long time. So you've been involved in in all this process for a long time.
Yep.
But do we have a legal opinion on this at all? Because I'm wondering, there's some, you know, chatter I'm hearing back and forth and I just want to make sure we're doing what's right here. Um, do you have a legal opinion on this that's saying that this is okay to move this as well? Or did you do this?
The.
Or what happens if we, if I hold for a legal opinion?
So I I don't think we have a legal opinion on this. Right now, what the administration would like to see is striking of the language that includes a refund of hand money, which would be precedent setting. Um, so we don't have a legal opinion. We are hopeful that there is an amendment made either in writing or a voice amendment, um, to strike that language that then would clear up any legal concern.
So, I'm sorry. Do you mind?
Oh, I'm sorry. Thank you, thank you. I just wanted to clarify. I guess really there what their concern is that we will have a legal problem if we rescind the money, correct?
I I don't think it's a.
We don't have one now by striking it. That's not a legal, it's not a question for anybody in the legal department. But if we decide to refund the money, then that's your concern as setting presidents and then maybe that needs a legal opinion there, I guess.
But the concern is not legal in nature, though there may be a legal question worth exploring if that's a path we're going to go down. The the concern that we've tried to highlight here is one of financial management and responsible financial management. And, you know, Councilmember, to your point, we're trying to act in a way that is fiscally responsible with sort of not just the city's budget in mind, but also the the 3TB trust fund that Director Gula is mentioning, responsible management of that. Um, so that's where the concerns are at, is a a financial matter, not necessarily a legal matter at this time.
But it could become one. But it could become one. I think I need to ask the Law Department this. So if if you don't mind, Madam Chair, could we maybe hold until the Law Department can come in?
So we cannot, we cannot hold this any longer. And I think there's probably someone in the chambers here who can explain why, or maybe, um, those joining us at the table already as to why we're up against the clock, but we really only have until next Tuesday.
No, I understand until next week, but can we just hold it till the end of the meeting is what I'm asking.
I see.
Until the Law Department.
Hold it at the end of the meeting.
Yeah, because then you can take the police, get them out of here and then get the Law Department in here. Does that sound fair?
I think we have.
I don't see anybody. She was here, but I don't see her now.
We're joined by the Law Department today.
Oh, you're with the Law Department. I'm sorry. You can come to the table if you don't mind. I apologize. I didn't know. You're with the Law Department. How are you?
I'm well, thank you. Kevin Frater, I'm an Assistant City Solicitor. Um, I'm standing in for Chrisa Kupiak, the City Solicitor. So what can I help you with? What's your question?
So I'm wondering if we do this now, will there be any legal ramifications down the road or any consequences legally?
Well.
Because we've never done this before, right?
To my knowledge, we have not done it before. Um, the, there would be certain legal ramifications that could occur, including members of the public being able to challenge the action, um, could incur court costs, could incur delays on things. And as was already said by Director Gula, uh, this would set a precedent that could cause, uh, significant damage to, uh, the, uh, the current land bank situation, which is in good standing. So that, at this point, uh, without doing a deep dive into it, I would, I would uh, ask Jack Miller, who is our, the head of our Real Estate Department at the Law Department. Uh, he may be able to give a better written opinion than I could on the matter because he's much more familiar with the land bank issues.
Can I say, just say, thank God for Marty Griffin making comments about our flag needing replaced. Because as we're in the middle of the meeting and walks the, the guys with the flags to replace them. Thanks, Marty Griffin. Sorry, I apologize. But you're going to watch these guys climb out the window to replace the flags. Um, anyway, uh, so I'm just trying to figure out what I'm doing here. I I want to make sure we're doing whatever's legally responsible and ethically responsible here. And I I just don't know enough about this particular situation. I hear what you're saying. I hear what everybody else is saying. And I know Councilman Calco has a heart of gold. I tell him there's somebody who was homeless that needed a job and he offered him a roofing job. So, I mean, he's just, and he's constantly taking care of people. And I think I I just want to make sure that whatever we're doing here is legally responsible. So I can abstain today unless others want to get a, um, legal opinion. Would you think a legal opinion would be helpful in this?
That's up to you. I I don't get to make the determinations or the decisions.
Do you think it would be helpful? You'll know.
I think that Jack would be able to give you a much more in-depth dive than I can.
Are you okay with that? Before Tuesday? Okay, so you can move it for today. We'll, I'll abstain. You can move it forward or we can, if the legal opinion comes back negative or in a way that we can't move forward, then we can kill it next week, table it next week.
Thank you. Um, thank you, Councilwoman. We have Councilman Wilson.
Thank you, Chair. Uh, before the, uh, the, our our legal office leaves the, um, the table, I just wanted to ask. I wasn't planning on asking about this, but the land bank came up several times in the comments and uh, how does this put the land bank at risk or are you, are you actually trying to say the Finance Department?
So the the land bank, um, trust fund is what I was discussing and the land bank trust.
No, the three taxing body.
I think you mean three taxing bodies. I'm sorry, yes, the three taxing bodies trust fund, um, that's in there. And that's, that's where the money, yeah, okay.
Yeah, that's all good. I just wanted to clear that up. Uh, next, I just wanted to um, just recognize that, you know, um, I appreciate the the work of the, of Director Gula and the Finance Department and, um, everyone that works there. You know, out of, out of your hands is is what this situation uh, is that's before us, which is, you know, just the length of time that it would, it would take to, um, I mean, maybe some of it's in your hands. I'm, I'm not, I'm not trying to pick through that now, but you know, just in general, the length of time that, you know, the buyer would have to wait, you know, from the time they see the property, the time they could actually get in and start, um, you know, repairing the property is, you know, I mean, that's the issue. Uh, uh, in this case, I believe, um, you know, the the years that that go by until they can get in and repair the roof. And that's, that's also, um, you know, more reason to, you know, why people choose, um, I'm without words right now, but it's, it's not eminent domain. It's the conservatorship. And that's why people choose conservatorship sometimes to get in sooner and report back to the judge on what the progress is. Um, and I'm also hearing uh, from some of my colleagues just, you know, celebrating the Finance Department, which is great. I mean, I love more tax revenue. Um, but we also have to be mindful, I know that this is a constant topic here at the table of, you know, selling to speculators or predatory, um, you know, future landlords or, you know, anyone that would, um, you know, wholesale or speculate. So we, you know, currently, there's no, I mean, I'm I'm happy to understand if I'm incorrect here, but my understanding is we just have to sell to the, to the, um, you know, to the highest bidder when we sell at the city. And if there's not a, you know, like a responsible buyer process, is that, is that correct, Director?
That's, that's not entirely true. Um, first of all, someone has to be vetted in order to become a purchaser, which means we look, they fill out an application and we have to make sure that that either company or individual does not have any open PLI violations and they do not owe any uh, municipal liens or or open tax dollars to the city. Second, then that property is actually vetted for the use that that person actually enters in on their application. So the planning department, there's a, there's a property committee that looks at that and says, okay, is is this parcel, what they want to use it for, apt for the end use, apt for where it's located and does it, you know, as long as it fits in with maybe what the community plan is and they're approved to buy it, then yes, we can definitely sell to anybody. We we have to.
You go.
Yes, we have to. It's sort of part of the.
You check with the community before you sell property?
Yeah.
Oh.
There's community plans.
I'm not, I'm not aware, I'm not aware of that. I have a couple of pieces of property that we uh, had on Eaton Street that, you know, I I guess I wasn't aware. You you emailed the community group or how does that happen?
There's, there's actually a working group of individuals that will reach out to community groups. They reach out to zoning and city planning. And then they either, they approve the property for sale for what the end use is based on the application.
I'm sorry, you said there's a committee?
Yep.
Oh, I'm sorry, Director. You said there was a committee that.
I'm sorry. I'm sorry if you didn't hear me. There is. It's, there's a review process of the property itself and its end use.
Yeah, I I know, but you just said you contacted the community. So what's, what's the process with the community?
There's for the community, they reach out to community groups or like if, if city planning actually has a community plan that's there, they will vet that parcel for its end use against what the plan is.
And that's just, that's something we have in our code or that's just something that a policy that you started to do?
It's a policy and it's been in practice for a number of years, probably since, I want to say at least 2018.
Okay, yeah, the body that we recently worked with, um, for Eaton Street, they didn't mention any of this. So I'm curious to know more about this. Um, I didn't realize that we had, uh, a robust process at the, at the city. You know, my understanding is that, that, I mean, I'm totally unaware of this because there's a house across the street from me, uh, on Spring Hill that was purchased and I don't, no one talked to this person. I mean, the, quite frankly, the the land bank reached out to them to understand what they were going to do with it. So I'm I'm curious to know what, you know, more about what you're talking about. I've, I've never heard of this. Uh, they purchased the property for the, because they were the highest bidder. Um, I mean, you know, I mean, yeah, I definitely think we should check on whether or not they're paying the taxes and if they have a violation. But anyway, my point was just, uh, that, you know, there there is a lot of concern that, um, you know, I know a lot of, uh, council members have brought up in the past about speculation, wholesale buyer buyers and everything. And I just wanted to point out that and I'm happy to learn more about this process that, that I'm not aware of. Um, but, uh, anyway, I was going to try and just talk about the land bank and how, you know, there, we, you know, there is a board, there is public meetings about, uh, these pros and that, that, about these, about the process of how we vet uh, buyers and, you know, to really fund the land bank long term, my, you know, my understanding, that would be like the best practice to go forward with. So I just want everyone to keep in mind that the land bank isn't funded past 2026. And I'm going to be, um, setting up a series of meetings. Uh, so if you're in, sorry, sorry, setting up a series of meetings to fund the land bank, uh, long term and make it sustainable. So if you're interested in uh, being a part of those meetings, uh, please reach out to me. And, um, you know, I just want to, want to highlight, you know, one way that we can, you know, um, have a bit, have a a greater, uh, control over, um, not having to sell to the highest bidder and making sure that, uh, these properties, um, get in the right hands.
So.
So thank you.
Can I just clarify for one moment, please? So selling to the highest bidder, we kind of have to do that. These properties are taken via treasure sale. We sell to the highest bidder to recuperate costs that we've already lost or tax dollars that were not collected or costs that were expended for demolition or cleanup that were never paid. So that's point number one. Point number two, just because we start a sale with a specific individual and the property and the individual was vetted for that sale, people can object to that sale. So this vetting process happens in the very beginning. There could be other objectors to that sale that we would vet as individuals to make sure that they could individually object to the sale, meaning they don't owe the city any more money. But they could also, through a court auction process, once it gets so far and there are objectors, then it would go to the highest bidder. then it would go to the highest bidder through a court auction, which means the person that started the sale with us that you approved at city council may not be the one that actually ends up with the property. But that is part of the Treasure Sale Act. This, these are things that we cannot control because the point of taking the properties in the beginning is to recuperate lost tax dollars or municipal costs. Does that help explain things?
Yeah, so, yeah, so that's why I'm confused on this, this other process that you're talking about. This objector that you're talking about, I mean, what, are they, like, do they have an opportunity to buy the property then?
They, anybody can object to any sale that is currently going on at the city. Once it gets to a certain point of the quiet title process, we can't accept any more objectors. But if there are objectors to the sale, we post them publicly, not only here in city council when they go as part of legislation, but they're advertised as part of the quiet title process. And in fact, people that border or are adjacent to the property that's being sold receive a letter and notify, notifying them that the property is being sold. And they too could object to the sale and purchase it for themselves if they so choose.
And are they paying a slower price?
They would have to place the hand money down just like everybody else and start a sale.
Yeah, but are they paying, are they, so there's a person who won the, the bidding process. Do they have to pay that price or higher?
They have to pay what they bid. The bidding, once it goes to court auction, it's held by a judge in a courtroom. There's an opening bid, which is usually the starting cost of the sale that we started. And then anybody else that would bid over that would be the highest bidder and it would go to them.
There's no hand.
Yeah, so we're by law.
No, they put down hand money in order to be an objector.
I'm not hearing anywhere in that process, the word community. So, I'm hearing judge, I'm hearing, you know, highest bidder. Like, I, I just, you know, I just wish we would just talk about, um, you know, just, just what we have to do by law in terms of the city.
Councilman, I would, I, if I think I'm understanding what you're asking about and the, the point you're trying to make, so correct me if I'm wrong. I do believe that there's a more.
I mean, the only part I make is just what we're required to do.
I, I do believe there is a more robust, community-driven process that the land bank has as part of their sales process as compared to the one that is within the city's process.
Yeah, 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 yeah. I mean, I mean, like, yeah, I just, I'll leave it go. I just don't understand why we went down this road of, uh, talking about this other process that I have no idea. Um, but, um, I'm sure there are, I'm sure there are properties that have been on the books for some time and the, you know, there is like more engagement on it. But, I mean, the fact of the matter is, we have to sell to the highest bidder. And I was just trying to bring a light to another process that we have, another tool that we have, the land bank. And that, um, you know, although I do think we should still, like, I'm in the camp where we should still continue selling property through the finance department, that's not what I'm trying to do here. I'm just trying to talk about, bring highlight about this other tool we have and how it's not funded past 2026. And how those are the concerns at the table here, uh, at city council. For literally the majority of time I've been on, on council, I hear, you know, uh, these concerns all the time. So, sorry, this got a little long-winded, but, um, I just feel like we got a little off track there. Thanks.
Thank you, Councilman.
Thank you. Uh, I don't know if we're going to go into second round, I'm sure we will, but I, I do have a couple of questions. Um, and at the risk of asking question, I know there are council members who have really delved into this process, worked with the finance department to make it as sort of efficient as possible, thus resulting in the many, many property increases that we've seen over the years. So, I'm, I'm just trying to get at like the, the concern we have before us today without actually talking about this particular. Um, if we were to make changes, I understand now why we wouldn't want to allow for it, like a blanket policy to allow for hand money to then be automatically applied to the next property. Because then, you, you actually articulated a different reason. In my mind, the predatory LLCs could take advantage of it. And then I come to the idea of, well, can we differentiate between a person or a city Pittsburgh resident? Or are we even allowed to? But even that, I can understand, it costs real money to go through the quiet title process and all of that. And it would cost, we would then lose money by not applying it to the next property of. Okay, but here's what I come back to, and this is along the lines of what Councilwoman Gross was getting at too, because it was also my impression that the vast majority of properties that go through this process do not have a structure on them. So, in the small instances where we do have a structure, someone is interested in the property in part because of the structure, have you had these conversations with whoever it is, PLI, DPW, to say, these need to be at the top of the list for roof repairs, for building stabilization? Because like someone's literally interested in getting it back on the tax rolls and paying taxes. Have you had those conversations? Do you know if they do prioritize that or if there's some mechanism that we could help with separate from this bill to help get those prioritized so that they can be, at least if the process is going to take a year, 18 months, et cetera, we know that, you know, we're going as fast as we can and you certainly are and the courts are as well, that at least the building will be stabilized in the meantime?
So, I wouldn't say necessarily a lot of formal conversation specifically on that topic. But there are a number of us that do meet to talk about our inventory and mostly about vacant land. But these types of conversations do come up. And it does usually involve finance, the law department, because they also have a real estate division as well, um, PLI, DPW, and the land bank. And so, I think that's part of how we all work together because some of those parcels that the land bank is interested in are ones that they know that they could take and turn around and may not be in the condition that would be suitable for us to actually sell to someone else. But they also have, you know, a group of investors too that are capable of doing that type of work. So, I wouldn't say it's necessarily formal, but those things are taken into consideration when we do talk as a group about how to improve our processes overall between all of us. Because we, everyone, it includes the URA as well. I mean, we all work together in order to work through the inventory and get it off the rolls and back into, you know, people's hands and, and profit generating again, so.
Do you think some sort of policy, whether it's policy, internal policy within the city's, the director's purview or actual formal legislation would help? Or would that be too restrictive to say, just to sort of say what, to formalize what is an informal conversation right now?
Well, the biggest concern that I have is the fact that, is at least for us, it has to come out of a trust fund that is just getting healthy. And it's always really come down to the cost of it. So, while we've made great strides and came a long way from where we were, I don't think we're in necessarily a position where we could really go out and expend a large amount of money because a lot of these fixes aren't going to be cheap in order to assist in property stabilization, which is why we've utilized the land bank to put those things in their hands because they're capable of doing it where we're not, so.
And then, I'm trying to be fair to the city and fair to the person who's bidding. Um, in situations like this, I get that it's pretty rare where there's been a request to return hand money because of a sale being rescinded or falling through. Um, what I'm hearing is that we know we spend money, but maybe we don't track it granularly enough to know how much of that, say, $4,000 is being spent in the process. Um, what I'm getting at is, could there be a splitting, not for, not today necessarily, but like in the future, a way to account for that to then be able to return some of the money that has been unspent? I don't know if that's even possible to calculate in each, in each of these instances.
I mean, we could look into it. It, it might be in the future, not necessarily for this one, but potentially.
Okay, okay. Just thinking of all the ideas, again, these are probably questions people have asked in your group, in your task force, in the various departments on council, of just sort of, you know, encountering this part of it for the first time. I will reserve any, um, my future questions for later and move to second round, I believe, unless we have others. So, we'll start with Councilman Coghill.
Thank you, Madam Chair. Uh, I just have a few questions. I promise I'm not going to keep you here long. Um, too late for that, I know. But I want you to know this is not a reflection. You know, you're doing exactly what I want you to do as a director. You need to protect that fund. It's like getting it from the jaws of death with you, which is, which is great. We want that, right? We want you to be a fiscal watchdog. But let me ask you this, Director. Of that fund, a million dollars, so we put in a third? Where, is, is our, is that completely in the city's hands, that money?
So, the, because it's always been in the, operated in the negative pretty much, um, the city, any of the, any of the proceeds that were actually made actually went back into the trust fund just to like cut grass. And we even know that in the past, like the maintenance cost, even expending that has been, and, you know, there's employees that get paid out of there as well for the work that they do specifically on property sales.
Yeah, I understand why you're protecting.
So, there's not really, yeah. So, the money that's generated, there's really nothing extra, right?
But it's a three TB, that's three taxing bodies.
Yep.
Does the school district have rights to that money or?
The way it should operate is, is yes, they would, but we would also be required to profit share with them as well.
Okay.
So, they could contribute, but we'd also be responsible for paying them.
But they don't contribute.
But we don't pay them either.
Okay, okay.
There's no, there's no proceeds to share. So, the money that's there just keeps getting recycled.
Okay, yeah. So, so I wanted to go back to 200 and say, what is it, 250 structures? Is that somewhere in the ballpark? Oh, no, I'm sorry, three, four, maybe even up to 500, but no more than 500. We said 95% is really land, right? So, and then you clear 250 in 23. So, we've got to get, be getting close to, what do we have, a couple of hundred left or?
250 sales, not, but that includes buildings and land.
Oh.
Right.
Okay, well, there you go, right.
Of which most of them were probably vacant, you know, lots.
Understand, right, right. So, you sell more land or more building, more land?
Well, more lands, mostly because the volume of the actual inventory is mostly land and not buildings.
Got it, right. So, we still have hundreds of structures, I'm sure.
And to be clear, these structures are probably dead-end properties when we get them that sat vacant for a number of years, so they're not in good condition ever.
I know. And that's my next question is how many do we acquire every year that fall into our hands basically, right?
So.
On average?
Wow, I think the last treasure sale, maybe we had 50 parcels available, but we weren't actually putting parcels in a treasure sale unless we knew that there was a buyer that wanted them.
Okay, so, and ones that we're acquiring now, the idea hopefully is that get those going directly into the land bank as well. And, and like Mr. Wilson noted, you know, the land bank is going to need money. And that's one thing you have right now, which is fortunate.
Well, the land bank, the land bank and the URA and if there are community groups would work through the land bank. They request us to put properties that they want in their inventory that they know are tax delinquent. We expose them to a treasure sale. We take them and, and then we transfer them to them.
Right.
But there's also individual buyers that would apply and we would take those as well. And they could either come to the sale and bid on them or buy them once we take them into our hands.
Okay, and I wanted to clarify one thing, uh, Councilwoman Wilson. And I think I have this right, but you correct me if I'm wrong. Objectors can spark an auction if they object, correct? Okay, once they spark that auction, if that objector goes and put, well, first of all, they have to put their hand money down. Now, they go to that auction and they, or they, they do not get the winning bid, then they get their money back, correct? Okay, because I've done that, right? So, that's no harm, no foul there.
Right.
As far as objectors go.
Right.
It's the people that we are dealing with through the city of Pittsburgh in our process, I feel like. And again, it really comes down to this. Um, the place is rotting before, after they put their hand money down. It, you know, I, and I understand your, I understand where you're at, I do. I understand your position, I really do. Um, so, it just needs to be a bigger, broader conversation. And this did happen, I know we refunded, you said once, but I'd like to call, Peter, come on up here, McDevitt, if, if I can, Madam Chair. He has some history, I think, or I don't know if once or twice. You said once this, somebody was refunded. And, and I'm not going to keep you here forever. And Kevin, I don't know if anybody else has anything for you. We could call you back up if they do.
I just like being part of the table.
Okay, good deal, good deal. Well, I was going to maybe occupy your seat with Sean, but, but go ahead, Peter, please.
Hi, Peter McDevitt, uh, City Council Budget Director. So, something that jumped out at me is talking about how this would be setting a new precedent. Um, maybe my understanding of the word precedent is different, but we have done this at least twice in the last three years where council has initiated legislation to rescind the sale and, uh, the hand money is to be refunded.
You have the amounts of that hand money?
I don't have the amounts of it.
Okay, all right, that's fine, that's fine.
And it was at the end of 2022 when Reverend Burgess sponsored legislation. And then 18 months ago, uh, Council President Lovell sponsored legislation to rescind the sale and refund the hand money. So, that's at least twice within the last three years.
So, and, you know, so. So, the fear possibly of the administration or anybody, you, Director, I guess, is that it would set precedents and open us up to a legal challenge. Glad you're here, Kevin, um, you know, but, uh, so, but if we have done it in the past.
Then it's not unprecedented.
It's not precedent, right?
Well, sorry, I, I don't think, appreciate Peter bringing up legislation, but I don't think we've had a chance to review the legislation and understand the, the sale that it related to. And it is likely not an apples-to-apples comparison. Previous legislation that's been put in front of me as prior examples have not been apples-to-apples comparisons under this administration. What I've seen are examples of, like Director Gula said, where, you know, either the city is at fault and unable to complete the sale or there is some sort of objection or dispute, but it's not the individual applicant who has applied who is then backing out, um, once we're ready to complete a sale.
Fair enough. There's no way that you can confirm that's the case. Right, okay, fair enough, fair enough, yeah. Right, so, um, okay, I guess I'm going to, I don't know what other members are going to do. I've had this conversation with really other members, other than a couple of brief, uh, you know, notes. And again, it's more the principle for me. So, I'm willing to bite the bullet and pay the four grand back. We do have a million dollars. We don't want to make precedents of this. We don't have that many structures where people can come back to us for millions of dollars, right? I mean, we only have a couple of hundred structures. So, at worst, if there's five others out there that say, hey, I, I wanted my money back, you know, so, you know, how much could it cost us in the end? But ultimately, we need to do some interior, you know, uh, reorganization, I think, more than anything here. But, um, but I appreciate what you do. I appreciate your stance on this. I love you protecting our money like, I really do. I, I want you to know, I, I respect that, okay? So, uh, so, um, okay, but that's it for me, Madam, Madam Chair. So, thank you very much and thank you, you for being here.
Thank you. And I know Councilmember Warwick had her hand up first and then Councilwoman, oh, no, no, you were just asking. Gotcha, Councilwoman Kale Smith.
Just briefly, I had initially had a lot of concern because I thought we never did this. I asked if we never did, ever did this before. And I'm finding out now that we did it just twice in the past few months. But I talked to somebody else and it's been seven times over the past few years and some of it has been initiated by your department and some by city council. So, now I feel a little bit, you know, more comfortable with moving forward. And that's it for me, thank you.
Thank you. Any further discussion? Seeing none, all those in favor of Bill 1634, please indicate by saying aye.
Aye. Aye.
Opposed, abstentions?
Abstain.
I'm going to abstain as well.
Two abstentions. Affirmative recommendation. That moves us on to new papers.
Great job, guys.
Bill 17, I'm sorry, we are going to take a little diversion from the regularly scheduled program and move over to Public Safety and Wellness Committee at the request of our attendees today, chaired by Councilman Coghill, Bill 1703.
Bill 1703, resolution authorizing the mayor, the director of the Office of Management and Budget and the director of the Department of Public Safety to enter into an agreement or agreements with the county of Allegheny for the purpose of receiving grant funds from the 2023 National Sexual Assault Kit Initiative Grant in the amount not to exceed $37,000 to support overtime for PBP detectives for the investigation of old sexual assault cases, the purchasing of materials to properly furnish a soft interview room for the Pittsburgh Bureau of Police and participation in approved training opportunities.
Motion to approve, brief discussion.
We have a second.
Second.
Second with discussion, Councilman Coghill.
Thank you, Madam Chair. Uh, Commander, thank you for being here. Commander, thank you for being here. I'm sorry that we had to, you know, we should have maybe took you first, yes, but I'm glad the acting chief left because he probably has, you know...
He had another meeting.
Right, you can handle this one, you can handle this one, I'm confident in you. But I don't really have any questions about it, I just wanted to make sure you came up and, you know, address if any other members had anything, but it seems pretty self-explanatory, $37,000, unless you want to explain it.
Yeah, it's just, we're seeking reimbursement. Allegheny County Medical Examiner's Office actually obtained the grant, and we are a subawardee. We did work for them on the... This is an extension of the grant that they got in 2019. We did work for them on an overtime basis, some of it, so they thought that we should receive reimbursement for it. So when they got the extension, they put in for a subawardee for us to receive, you know, no more than $36,000 for overtime and then $1,000 for us to furnish a soft interview room. So we're just looking for reimbursement to work that we're going to do anyway.
Understood, thanks, Commander.
Thank you. Councilmember Charlin.
Yeah, thank you for being here. I just understand this, I'm very supportive of any time we're getting grants for anything. But we are paying for work that we've already done, or is this a reimbursement for work that we've already done?
No, well, we've done some of the work already. This is work to be done yet. We have identified the kits that we have in our property room that are untested. Most of that work was done with on-duty personnel.
Okay.
Reports were printed and pulled to give to the coordinator of the Saki Grant for the county. That took some overtime hours. We have marked those as reimbursed, have not sought reimbursement yet, but those were overtime hours that were already spent. The next part of the process is when they ask for the kits to be sent to the crime lab, we pull them, write reports, transport them. That's where the bulk of the work is going to come in, and then any follow-up investigations that follow.
Okay, and just out of curiosity, what is a soft interview room?
Right now, we have interview rooms that are basically for, very cold and sterile, consist of a desk and a chair. Those are recorded rooms, not very conducive for victim interviews.
Gotcha.
We take them into conference rooms sometimes, other times take them into these sterile rooms. So a softer room with a couch, some soft furnishings, make it a little more easy for them to relax and tell their story as it comes to a sterile environment.
Sure, that makes sense. All right, thank you very much.
Thank you. Any further questions? And I apologize, I didn't quite catch if you said your name and your... I did not, I'm sorry. Lori McCartney, I'm the commander of major crimes. Thank you, thank you, just for the record, thank you. Any further discussion?
Thank you for your work.
Seeing none, all those in favor of Bill 1703, please indicate by saying aye.
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 Affirmative recommendation, thank you very much. Thank you, I appreciate it. Have a good day. Thanks. That moves us back up to our Finance and Law Committee, new papers, Bill 1709.
Bill 1709, resolution authorizing the issuance of a warrant in favor of Angelina Preor and her attorneys, Kontos, Minjean, Killian, and Hassan, for a single payment in 2025 in an amount not to exceed $80,000 in full and final settlement of litigation filed in the Allegheny County Court of Common Pleas.
Is there a motion?
Motion to approve?
Second.
Discussion? All those in favor of Bill 1709, please indicate by saying aye.
Aye.
Affirmative recommendation, Bill 1710.
Bill 1710, resolution authorizing the issuance of a warrant in favor of Gladys Sanchez in an amount not to exceed $8,301.36 over one year in full and final settlement of a claim for damage to her vehicle from an accident with the city police vehicle on December 17th, 2024.
Is there a motion? Motion to approve?
Second.
Discussion? Seeing none, all those in favor of Bill 1710, please indicate by saying aye.
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 Affirmative recommendation, Bill 1711.
Resolution authorizing the execution of a quick claim deed conveying all of the city's right, title, and interest into the city-owned properties located in the 12th Ward of the city and designated in the deed registry office of Allegheny County as block and lot 124N282, 283, 288, 290, 291, 292, 293, 124P96, 125B, 128, 129, 130, 131, 132, and 134 to the Larmor Consensus Group through the Pittsburgh Land Bank for consideration set forth herein relating to the full and final settlement of cases filed in the Allegheny County Court of Common Pleas.
Is there a motion?
Motion to approve?
Second.
Discussion? Seeing none, all those in favor of Bill 1711, please indicate by saying aye.
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 Affirmative recommendation, that moves us on to invoices. Is there a motion on invoices?
So moved.
Can I get a second? Oh, second. Discussion? Seeing none, all those in favor of invoices, please indicate by saying aye.
Aye.
Aye. Affirmative recommendation. That moves us on to P-cards. Is there a motion on P-cards?
So moved.
Second. Discussion? There were no notable comments from our Assistant Budget Director on P-cards. All those in favor of P-cards, please indicate by saying aye.
Aye.
Aye. Affirmative recommend... P-cards are approved. That moves us to Public Works and Infrastructure Committee chaired by Councilmember Warwick.
Bill 1712, resolution authorizing the mayor and the director of the Office of Management and Budget and the director of the Department of Mobility and Infrastructure to apply for grant funding from the Pennsylvania Department of Conservation and Natural Resources Community Conservation Partnership Program to provide funding for the rehabilitation of Emerald View Trail Project. The grant proposal includes an ask of $250,000 with a match of $250,844.42 from the city of Pittsburgh's capital budget for a total project cost of $500,844.42 for this stated purpose.
Motion to approve?
Second.
Discussion?
Just brief discussion, do you mind?
I believe we also have Angie Martinez joining us online. Oh, for the next bill, sorry.
Can you just give me a little...
Quick one?
Yeah.
Okay. We currently have $300,000 in the 2024 capital budget, that's for design. This $250,000, the grant that we're going after is for the construction portion of the project. So that will be about a $500,000, and then we might have to put in additional ask in the 2025 capital, or 2026 capital budget for the rest of the construction of that project.
I'm just, and you've had, I just want to be clear, you've had meetings with the, there's a committee, the Parks Committee for the Emerald View Parks Trail Committee, you've had meetings with them. But have you had meetings with the general public outside of that committee, that group?
We have not, but we can do that.
Yeah, I want you to do that, because every time we do a project, somebody's saying, that's not the project that's most important, or somebody's saying, who made these decisions?
Yep.
And people don't attend meetings if they're not part of a committee, but yet they still care about the community, they want to know what's happening. So just, in general, I think we should be, I think we need to do better at meeting with the residents and getting out there and talking with them about a lot of the projects we're doing, and this is one of them. But one of the most important projects for that community is the Shaler Park renovations for the Island McCoy Park on Shaler. And I did, we did, thanks for the counsel, we did just put forward a $500,000 to have that park renovated. So if we could do a project, I know that's very important to the community, but I think I'd like to hear from the community, which is their most important priorities. So, and I know they're different departments, different, but at the same time, I want to prioritize the things with... I want to engage them, I want them to have an opportunity. Listen, I get frustrated sometimes when it comes to public safety and the public having so much to say about where the bike lanes should be, or where the speed bumps should be, or where red lights should go, because I think that should be experts in public safety who help direct that. I think you should give them some feedback, but I don't know if they should have every com... They should control every comment or every project. But when it comes to things like their playgrounds, their parks, and things like that, I think we should be, try to do a little bit more engagement in those areas. But I do appreciate that they at least try to get a committee together, they have the feedback online that you can give, but sometimes people aren't familiar with using the online sources, you know, resources, so.
I hear you.
Thank you. I want to thank you for the work that you've done across our district, thank you, you've been great. That's it.
Thank you, Councilmember Warwick, did you have a question?
Yeah, thanks. So that just, you know, your comments reminded me one thing, and I know that we've talked about it, but I really think that going forward, we need to kind of solidify process-wise, is I would say, over the past few years, there has definitely been a shift, at least in my experience, right, in my district, right? There has been a major shift in the amount of engagement between the city and the community, which is great. Like, it's wonderful. Like, the Neighborhood Services team is so nice to have people there. However, right, when, and this is something I've experienced, right, is it's like, when the city is so accessible, like, in community, right, there, you do get the thing of like, well, I wasn't at the meeting, and I didn't know about that meeting, even though there were so many meetings. So it's almost like we're in a, in sort of like, it's like a mesh between the before and the after, and I think that now we really need a solidif... Where we are saying on, and I know it would be different depending on the size of the project, right, but where we are making abundantly clear upfront, you know, it would be nice to just have a standard template, right, based on project size, but like, this is the project, and we are going to have X number of meetings, the first meeting is going to be input, you know, whatever it is, right, like, just hypothetically, like, the first meeting is going to be input on design, what would you like to see, right? The next meeting is going to be, this is the, but making it clear, like, this is the design that we paid for, and this is it, and now we're like, just showing it to you, and then this, right, to so that it's very clear for folks what our process is, because I've noticed, and, you know, and it's no fault of the public, right, because they don't understand inner workings, but like, where there's confusion, where it's like, for example, we're at a stage where we've gotten our permits and we're going to bid, and then they're like, well, could we, like, make a, you know what I mean? Like, we'd like to see like a different window or a door, and it's like, to make that change would mean to like go back to the pre-permitting. So it's like to really make it clear from the outset what the engagement process is going to look like, and, you know what I mean, and so that, so that then when folk, I mean, we do our best to let people know, but if we could say upfront, this is, these are all the things that you can expect in terms of engagement, and then, at the very least, then when someone comes, you know, at the tail end and says, wait a minute, I was there, at least we can say, okay, well, actually, you know, these are all the meetings that we had. And I know that's on the Engage page, but I don't know, just if there's a way to kind of formalize that process depending on project size. Thanks.
Thank you. Any further discussion? Seeing none, all those in favor of Bill 1712, please indicate by saying aye.
Aye.
Aye. Affirmative recommendation, Bill 1713.
Bill 1713, resolution authorizing the mayor and the director of the Department of Public Works to enter into an agreement and/or amendments with the University of Pittsburgh for the purpose of providing supplemental waste operations in the Oakland neighborhood at no cost to the city.
Can I motion for a one-week hold?
Second.
Second, discussion? Is it, this is the request of the department?
Yeah.
Okay, great. All those in favor of a one-week hold, please indicate by saying aye.
Aye.
Bill will be held for one week. That moves us on to Land Use and Economic Development Committee chaired by Councilman Wilson.
Supplemental Papers, Bill 1738, ordinance amending of Pittsburgh Code of Ordnances, Title V, Traffic, Article VII, Parking, Chapter 549, Residential Parking Permit Program to clarify the regulations for posting of signage.
Motion to approve discussion?
Second.
Second with discussion, Councilman Wilson.
Oh, thank you, Chair. Yeah, I just wanted to know, is there someone from DOMI here to discuss the bill?
Yes, this is the...
And I'm sorry, I can defer to the bill sponsor, sorry, sorry about that.
It's your committee, Councilman.
We do have some people here in person, and this is the, these are the next two bills that are ones that also Angela Martinez is available online for, so, well-covered.
Okay. Let me see here, so since... So I missed that, are we waiting for something on the table where everyone's online?
No, you can ask your questions, we're ready to go.
All right, so for Bill 1738, I want to thank the sponsor, I know that he's worked hard on this, and I just wanted to ask about future districts that could be created, and specifically, there's one on the north side that, you know, we've been discussing with DOMI and the Parking Authority, and if I could get some clarity on whether or not this would affect that district.
Yeah, Ryland Seifert, CUPSI Program Manager with DOMI. Councilman, this is going to be used in very narrow circumstances. For context, DOMI only took over the RPP program in the beginning of 2022, so this is the first time that we're actually here to do a minor expansion of an RPP zone. And as we've managed our RPP program over the past few years, we've noticed a few of these little tweaks that need to be made to the code language. So installing limited amounts of RPP signage in non-residential areas is something that there's already precedent for in a few different neighborhoods, a few different streets for that context makes sense. Also in hybrid RPP areas, which is something that the code allows for that we haven't implemented any of yet, so it's really just to give us that opportunity. That's not something I expect us to do on a wide-ranging basis, really on a block-by-block, case-by-case basis, and I don't see how this would have any impact to the kind of parking enhancement district conversations that we've been having.
Okay, great. Yeah, I'm happy that we're using the hybrid option. I know that we included that when we worked together, Ryland, in the past on the bill that I put forward and this council voted for, so good to see this coming to fruition on the south side. And so, in terms of this wouldn't affect anything, I just want to be clear, this is under Section 54909, posting signs indicating restrictions enforcement. So the line where it says, talks about signs, it's in bold in the text, "Signs may only be posted in regulations enforced in non-residential zoning districts." So is this, is this just reinforcing the code that was already written, that we wrote together years ago, or is this new language that only, it just doesn't look like it's specific to, I mean, it's under B, so it is specific to these, it is mentioned, these other areas are mentioned on the south side. I just want to make sure that this isn't just a broad, like a broad stroke of the whole code, and it's only specific to the south side.
It's only specific to the RPP program in areas where there would be hybrid RPP or at DOMI's discretion, and so that's something that would come about from conducting parking studies, like we do for these sorts of minor expansions or new RPP zones or that sort of thing. I don't anticipate that would have an impact on any existing RPP zones as signed.
I just know we have a unique scenario in the Allegheny West area where there is this, you know, it's like a, before we had hybrid, well, this would be the first hybrid, but, you know, there was a, there was some different signage there that exists, it doesn't exist anywhere else, and so there's just one example that comes to mind.
Yeah.
But, good.
We would not be adjusting any other signage retroactively in existing RPP zones.
Okay. All right, well, thank you for your time, and I won't leave you with further questions, thanks.
Thank you. Councilmember Charlin.
Yeah, so thank you guys for being here, just to make sure everybody's aware of what all has gone on here. This is related to a development that's in the south side that we have been working to try to get from, actually, the project was entitled in 20, before I even was a staffer. Entitled, was sold to someone else, was titled again, was, the residents appealed the entitlement to the appellate courts. This is a compromise that we found between the constituents, the developers, and the city, being a tri-party... This is a compromise that we found between the constituents, the developers, and the city, being a tri-party lawsuit there, and, uh, this is the step that we need in order to get the residents on board with building this, this project that is truly just an underutilized, um, like, alleyway that during the pandemic, people were, uh, you know, doing peel-outs and car shows unauthorized and like some really dangerous stuff happening there. Uh, but this is, is the step that we need. I'm very thankful that the development group was willing to stick, you know, stick themselves out here and commit to doing this for so long. I think a lot of other people with less deep pockets would have walked away. But we've met with this group literally every Friday for almost a year now, to try to find a way to find, get a compromise. We've got it at a standing meeting. I thank that DOMI, because this is one portion of the problem. There's also been a traffic calming, uh, component that DOMI has had to work through as well, but thank you for, you know, your commitment to see this through. But this is, is a ton of work that went through, you know, from, from our end, that is, you know, again, I cannot reiterate enough, additional costs that is put onto the developer that will then, they will then recoup in increased rents, and really speaks to like, how challenging this process can be. So we're moving some parking space around. It might not seem like a huge deal for, for you guys, because this is the work that you do, but um, being able to do this is being able to create, you know, additional tax revenue, additional housing, and also cure a blighted area. So I just cannot thank you enough for, for the work that you've been able to do to make this, this happen, and thank my colleagues for their support here of this, of this project. Thank you.
Thank you. Any further discussion on Bill seventeen thirty-eight? Seeing none, all those in favor of Bill seventeen thirty-eight, please indicate by saying aye.
Aye.
Affirmative recommendation. Bill seventeen thirty-nine.
Bill seventeen thirty-nine, resolution amending Resolution ninety-eight of two thousand and seventeen, providing for the implementation of a residential permit parking program, Area KK, in the south side flats, to expand the streets pursuant to Pittsburgh City Code, Chapter five forty-nine.
Motion to approve.
Second.
Discussion? Seeing none, all those in favor of Bill seventeen thirty-nine, please indicate by saying aye.
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 Oh.
Affirmative recommendation. Thank you very much.
Thank you, guys.
That moves us on to deferred papers. Bill seven forty-nine.
Bill two thousand and twenty-four, seven forty-nine, resolution authorizing the mayor and the director of the Office of Management and Budget to enter into an agreement or agreements with Aubrey for services relating to non-congregate shelter services related to the home ARP program for a total cost not to exceed one million five hundred thousand dollars.
Motion to hold five weeks.
Second.
Discussion? Seeing none.
Councilwoman, um, Councilwoman Strausberger, sorry, I didn't have time to raise my hand.
Absolutely. Councilmember Gross.
Thank, thank you, appreciate it. Um, I'm curious, um, kind of what is going on with this bill? I feel like it's actually been on the agenda many months now. I remember, I mean, this is the same bill that Councilman Koppel and I asked to kind of go through a process last year, I believe. Um, I don't have the whole legislative record in front of me, and then it did. And I haven't had an update on it, so I'm wondering if, if there's anyone who can, uh, from the administration who can speak to it.
I can provide an update.
Interrogatory?
Yes?
Uh, okay, yeah, so there was an email from Kelly Russell, and I can just um, kind of summarize this, basically, last Wednesday, I'm sorry, if we refresh our memory, this was just a, you know, this was a property in the Councilman Charlotte's district, and there was, there was many, um, uh, there was meetings about this. We had an onsite meeting, and on that onsite meeting, uh, it came out that there was some miscommunication or a lack of communication between different governmental entities. And so there's a new application that had to be done, and last Wednesday, HUD rep finished reviewing the draft, reviewing the draft substantial amendment with a preference for homeless families in our home ARPA plan. And they have a meeting scheduled with consultants at Urban Design Ventures tomorrow at eleven to plan out the official substantial amendment process. This includes placing a newspaper ad, holding a public meeting, having a fifteen-day call-in period. I hope we can, and so they can even continue the emails saying like, just I hope that they can get a five-week hold so they can figure this out.
Um, I'm just recalling actually, as I pulled it up, I mean, we, we, again, I think it was Councilman Koppel and I first kind of questioned it. It was July of twenty twenty-four, um, and we were disappointed because of the federal rules. Um, the federal rules, and it says it right in the title, it's for non-congregate. And so we were hoping that it would be conducive for use for one of the tiny house communities that could be put up quickly, cheaply. Again, members have heard us talk about it for several years, right, that if you can put up kind of fifty tiny houses, like a hundred other cities have done, that, um, you can house people more quickly. It's easier than converting a building. But, alas, almost all of those have shared bathroom facilities. You have to go bathroom trailer, which can be very fancy, have showers, have toilets, can be really, really nice, but unfortunately, the federal rules still call those congregate, and this, this little pot of money, it's not so little, but it is little when you're talking about creating homes or temporary housing or anything, is, is one point five million, um, disqualified doing that kind of project. So we were frustrated. And again, I've lost track of it since then, but we know that, you know, while we've made great progress and brought several hundred people indoors, um, that it's still, you know, an issue that we want to move quickly on, so I'll leave it there, um, and, um, you know, I won't try to hold it up today, but I'll be looking forward. A five weeks does still seem like a long time. I mean, again, it's been held since July of twenty twenty-four. Um, so, uh, I just, I just wanted to, to say that, you know, let's, let's figure out what the obstacles are. And that's, that's all I, all I'll say, Madam Chair. Thank you, appreciate it.
Thank you. Is there any further discussion on the motion to hold five weeks?
Madam Chair.
Councilman Wilson.
Yeah, if anyone's interested in, um, getting, you know, more details, reach out to the administration or Kelly Russell. And, uh, you know, this is a, um, I'm not sure how it relates to the tiny house legislation, but, uh, this is, um, yeah, this is, from my understanding, this is just following the process. This isn't my bill. This is, um, this was something the administration was trying to get done, and then come to find out that the county, the administration had an idea of what was, uh, going to be, you know, who was going to be housing this, in this, uh, uh, building, building that would have to be rehab. Uh, and then, uh, the county onsite said, no, we don't, like, we plan to house families here, so. Yep, yep, anyone wants to have further information, I can certainly facilitate anything, but you can certainly just reach out to Kelly Russell as well. Thanks.
Thank you very much. All those in favor of five-week hold for Bill seven forty-nine, please indicate by saying aye.
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 Bill will be held for five weeks. That moves us on to Recreation, Youth and Senior Services chaired by Councilwoman Kale Smith.
Bill number seventeen oh seven, resolution authorizing the mayor and the director of Parks and Recreation to enter into a sponsorship agreement with Dollar Bank for Cinema in the Park at no cost to the city.
Motion to approve.
Is there a second?
Second.
Second.
Discussion? Seeing none, all those in favor of Bill seventeen oh seven, please indicate by saying aye.
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 Affirmative recommendation, seventeen oh eight.
Resolution authorizing the mayor and the director of Parks and Recreation to enter into multiple sponsorship agreements enumerated herein for the Richard S. Colagery Great Race.
Motion to approve.
Second.
Discussion? And registration for the Great Race is now open, correct? I'm getting nod, yes? Okay, everyone should register for the Great Race.
And I just, I just want to thank City Parks for all the work they do. They do a tremendous job with a small budget, and they just appreciate everything they do for the city.
Thank you.
Thank you.
All, any further discussion? All those in favor of Bill seventeen oh eight, please indicate by saying aye.
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 Affirmative recommendation. That moves us on to our final committee of the day, Intergovernmental and Educational Affairs Committee chaired by Councilman Mosley.
Bill number seventeen oh four, resolution adopting plan revision to the City of Pittsburgh's official sewage facilities plan for two ninety-six McKee Place at no cost to the city.
Motion to approve.
Second.
Discussion?
Just briefly, whose district is this in? This, apparently, there's a, there's got to be two McKees in the city. Yeah, because this is the wrong zip code for Oakland. I've looked this up, and I was trying to figure this out myself.
Oakland's one five two one three.
Yeah.
There's one in Homewood, isn't there?
Let's see here, we can look this up pretty quickly. So this looks like it is indeed in District Three. And perhaps we need a, I don't see any other McKee Places, two ninety-six McKee Places coming up, so perhaps we need a voice amendment to change the, um, zip code, to correct the zip code?
Okay.
One five two one three. Looks like it was a small typo.
Yeah, I just pulled up the attachments in the legislation, and the attachments were one five two one three.
Okay. Okay. That makes more sense then. There is a project there, so.
Would someone like to make a motion to strike one five two three two from the title of the bill, and we can see if it's necessary. Madam Clerk, were you able to see if it was necessary in the body of the bill as well? In, in the, in the title and in the body of the bill?
It's throughout.
Uh, any, so every place that, that exists, one five two three two, changed to one five two one three?
Can we do that? Is that?
Yes.
Are we able to do that as a vote?
To make that motion to replace uh, one five two three two to one five two one three in the title and all throughout the bill?
Second.
Discussion? All those in favor of amending the bill as stated, please indicate by saying aye.
Aye.
Aye. Bill is amended. Discussion on amended bill. Seeing none, all those in favor of Bill seventeen oh four as amended, please indicate by saying aye.
Aye.
Aye. Affirmative recommendation. Thank you for catching that, Councilperson. Bill seventeen oh five.
Bill seventeen oh five, resolution adopting plan revision to the City of Pittsburgh's official sewage facilities plan for two fifteen South Twenty-first Street at no cost to the city.
Motion to approve.
Second.
Discussion?
Everything happens in District Three, I guess.
We, we get two projects built.
Whipper snapper down there.
Bobby, Bobby, Bobby.
All those in favor of Bill seventeen oh five, please indicate by saying aye.
Aye.
Aye. Affirmative recommendation, seventeen oh six, our final bill of the day.
Resolution approving and authorizing the mayor, the director of the Department of Finance, and the director of the Department of Public Works on behalf of the City of Pittsburgh to enter into an agreement or agreements with the Allegheny County Sanitary Authority to provide permanent easements for subterranean tunnels through nine parcels of city-owned properties currently identified as Allegheny County parcel ID numbers, forty-four S two thirty, seven A one ninety-five, seven M one ten nine, seven F one oh seven, eight B one fifty, eight G two fifty, eight D fifteen, seven L thirty-one, and seven P two hundred, and to accept payment therefore in the amount of eight thousand two hundred dollars.
Motion to approve.
Second.
Discussion?
Madam Chair, have a question?
Yes, Councilwoman Gross.
Thank you. Um, just for the clerk, maybe, um, when the titles of the bills kind of have no, um, you know, only have parcel numbers, it's really hard for anyone to know what those correspond to. So in some kinds of bills, we put the council district number or some kind of street address. I think I looked up the attachments to this one on the map, and I'm not sure where it is. It's, um, it's definitely, um, I think in the west end, near the west end tunnel or traffic circle. Um, so I was wondering if anyone, Councilwoman Smith maybe knows that this is that one, or does anyone know kind of like which?
Yeah.
There's going to be many of these Alka-Sand dating sites, and I was curious if, which one this is.
These parcels that are coming forward are either on the north side, some of them will be on the north side, right under the West End Bridge, and some will be over in the west end near the Botaglia old former dumping site. And this is for the west end, well, it's for Alka-Sand, but it will also be part of the, uh, project for the West End Bridge and the, um, the renovations underneath. It's supposed to mirror what's happening on the north side, but it'll be under the West End Bridge. I hope I live to see it. But, um, it's a great project.
Thank you, appreciate that. And so I don't know if this is on the clerk's side, or do we need to send a, uh, I'm not even sure which
You can, you can look on-
department sends these over, and maybe we just ask them to give us some, some geographic bearing in the title of the bill.
We should bring you an update on it.
More helpful for our agenda. Appreciate it.
Not a problem. For the properties, when we get, um, legislation for Alka-Sand, a lot of times, they don't include the parcel, um, the addresses, but we'll reach out and make sure that they do for next pieces of legislation.
Thank you, Madam Clerk. I appreciate it.
You're welcome.
Thank you. Any further discussion on seventeen oh six? Seeing none, all those in favor of Bill seventeen oh six, please indicate by saying aye.
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 Affirmative recommendation. That concludes our Standing Committee's agenda. We have a few meeting announcements. Friday, April eighteenth, council and clerks' offices will be closed due to the Good Friday holiday. Next week, council will hold their regular meeting on Tuesday, April twenty-second, and their Standing Committee meeting on Wednesday, April twenty-third, both at ten AM. To register to speak at these meetings and hearings, please fill out the sign-up form on the council meeting webpage by the deadline, and you may also call the clerk's office at four one two two five five two one three eight. Is there anything from members? Councilwoman Kale Smith.
I just want to, um, wish everyone a happy Easter, uh, this weekend, but I also want to remind people that we have our District Two Easter egg hunt, which is Saturday, eleven AM at Westwood Field. You don't need to pre-register, just show up. Uh, parking Giant, Commander Ripple made arrangements with Giant Eagle to have parking down on the Giant Eagle Parking Lot of Nobles Town Road, and people can get a shuttle, a Pittsburgh Police Shuttle, up to the field, so it puts less kids at risk with all the cars and vehicles riding around. So we'll have that, but, um, you know, everyone's welcome. We'll have things for kids with differing abilities, but if you have some special accommodations you need, please contact our office. Motorcycle rides are supposed to be there. I just, we'll see, we'll see if they, they show up. Otherwise, you're going to be pedaling a bicycle. Yeah, I talked to the chief, yeah. So we'll see. But I hope everyone comes. Councilwoman Strausberger, you're always a big hit. Everybody loves, that you have so much fun with the kids that day, so thank you.
Thank you for always hosting it.
Yeah.
Any further comments from members? Seeing none, I'll take a motion to excuse the absent member, approve the minutes, and adjourn the meeting. All those in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Meeting is adjourned.